Twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. While the Planning Commission welcomes public involvement in free speech, it rejects comments from anyone that are discriminatory, defamatory, or otherwise not protected speech. Those comments will not inform nor be considered by the Planning Commission and may cause, be cause for the Chair to interrupt the Speaker. Such comments will not be consented to or otherwise adopted by the Planning Commission in its discussions and findings for any matter tonight. Thank you. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Commissioner Woods will lead us tonight.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today Huntington Beach lost an icon in this city, Shirley Detloff. Shirley spent almost her entire life serving the citizens of Huntington Beach. She was Chairman of the Huntington Beach Planning Commission. She was a Commissioner with the OC Harbors, Beaches and Parks. She was a Director at Orange County Sanitation District. She served as Mayor of the City of Huntington Beach. She served on the City Council of the City of Huntington Beach, and she's been a member of the California Coastal Commission. Shirley was involved in numerous organizations, including Amigos de Bolsa Chica, League of Women Voters, AAWU, Sierra Club, and the Audubon Society. Shirley graduated from the University of Santa Barbara with a BA in Education. She went on to become a special education teacher while raising her family here in Huntington Beach. Shirley also owned a travel agency and an educational publishing, educational publishing business. On behalf of the entire Planning Commission, we'd like to extend our sincere condolences to her husband, Bob, her family, and her friends. You will be missed, Honorable Mayor Detloff. May I ask for a moment of silence? Thank you. May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Adam.
Here.
Commissioner Bowman is absent. Vice Chair Kennedy.
Here.
Chair Twining.
Here.
Commissioner Wood.
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez is absent. And Commissioner Acosta Galván.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ruth. Now is the time for public comments for items that are not on the agenda this evening. Do we have any public comments tonight?
We do have two public comments, Mary Jo Beritich and John Costello. Please come down to the microphones.
My name is Mary Jo Beritich. I've been a resident of Huntington Beach for forty-one years, and I've lived in the close by location to the area that you're speaking about, the seven acres along Newland Street. And I've been working with the Coastal Commission for many years. And in nineteen eighty-one, actually, they had proposed, the park owner at the time had proposed that to be a residential area, and the Coastal Commission objected, that was nineteen eighty-one, because it was a restorable wetlands. And there was pond, was ponding there, there were invasive, there were the native species of plants were there, and including the endangered buildings of Anasparil. But along came the new AES facility, and the Energy Commission overrode the Coastal Commission at that time and made that a parking lot for workers for the new AES facility that was going to be built. Now we have a concern. It's not necessarily having homes there. One of the things is, is the future proposed dissemination of the units, one and two and three and four, of the old AES two facilities. And we were wondering where the parking would be if that parking would not be available, if there was, if there were homes built on that, because it's such an accessible place right now. And that was one of the questions that we were asking about and wondering if that was going to be a proposal in the future or if this is going to happen. Additionally, I'd like to know if you're interfacing with the Coastal Commission at this point in time with Tom Lester or Andrew Willis to see what their viewpoints are. And I think that's pretty much what I need to say. And I, it's another thing later on in future, which is not part of this, is the zoning change. In the PowerPoint that you have in one of the last pages, it shows the zoning changes, the also changes of that parcel, the three acre parcel. But it also shows a change in the mobile home park next door, Huntington by the Sea. Instead of showing it as MHP, it shows it as R eight, R, I was, medium housing, RM. And also, it also has a strip along the front, because I think this is a proposal that was never approved. And it also shows the wetlands becoming coastal, becoming commercial visitor serving. So I think that PowerPoint section is incorrect. So I.
You can keep going.
There, you talk to me at another time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm on the homeowners board for Cabrillo Beachfront Village, which is the same place that Mary Jo's at. And to pick up on what Mary Jo said, this is the map from two thousand and sixteen. It's a zoning map that apparently was updated in two thousand and twenty-two. I don't know if you want to take a look at it. I just want to make sure that at some point, the map seemed to be out of sync, what was in two thousand and sixteen, that shows that strip that Mary Jo referred to in front of Cabrillo as CV, whereas twenty-two, the one we like, shows it as what it's supposed to be, CC, or it's, it's protected. It's green, as opposed to on this map in sixteen, it shows it as orange. So there's an incongruency there that I want to make sure at some point, maybe it's a moot point, but we really want to make sure that it is never going to be reverted back to this incorrect map, and that it will always be the one that's in twenty-two. Secondarily, and I think it's good, good timing that Shirley was up here, I'm sure she'd support this, I would think, my sympathies to her, but as part of the Coastal Commission, I just want to know at some point what you will address regarding SB four twenty-three, which apparently, starting next year, is going to loosen some of the development along the coast and dilute the power of the Coastal Commission. And so at some point in the future, I imagine Huntington Beach is going to have to, if not already, deflect or defend or be a part of this new law that passed last year and was signed by the Governor. So it would be great to hear it. If this is the forum for it, I don't know how the comments are responded to on both of these items, or if it's just put down for the record and kind of gets filed away, but I definitely wanted to bring both of those things up in a somewhat directly or indirectly related topic today. Thank you very much.
We have no more speakers.
Thank you. Can I just make a note, and maybe when we get to that, to that section of our zoning map amendment that Mary Jo Beritich talked about, and Mr. Costello, can we spend a little extra time on that one, and so we understand, we'll have the maps in front of us, and we can make a better judgment on what's going on there, if that's all right with everybody? Just point it out and say, this is it. Okay? Thank you. Next is after the public here, we have a zoning map amendment, amendment number twenty-four zero zero one, local coastal program amendment number twenty-four zero zero one, mapping consistency cleanup project coastal zone. Planning Commissioners, please state your disclosures regarding this item. We'll start with Commissioner Galván.
Nothing to report.
I had a phone call with a representative of someone from the trailer park.
I met with the planning staff yesterday to discuss this, you know, today's agenda. No disclosures.
I met with planning staff also.
All right. Staff, may we have the presentation, please?
Yes, Madeline Welch will give the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Tonight's item is a zoning map amendment to various sites within the coastal zone. So to begin, staff has identified twenty-three parcels within the coastal zone, which have zoning designations that are inconsistent with the general plan. With that, the request tonight is to amend the current zoning designation of such parcels to bring them into conformance with their general plan designations. And the request includes a zoning map amendment, as well as a local coastal program amendment to amend the city's certified LCP to reflect the changes proposed in this zoning map amendment. The general plan is a comprehensive blueprint that guides the framework for the utilization and management of the city's physical and economic resources, and also guides decisions regarding land use in the city through the year 2040. State law requires that every city adopt a general plan, and also requires that the zoning ordinance be consistent with it. The zoning map amendment, or the zoning map and the ordinance are both tools that are used to implement the general plan land use element. This amendment is prompted as a housekeeping item to clean up the zoning map, to bring those parcels into conformance with the current general plan designation, and to eliminate any nonconformities. The amendment, the amended zoning of the parcels in tonight's request would be to the zone in which corresponds with its existing general plan designation. The amended designations will correspond with the existing uses on site as well. Two thousand six hundred and twelve notices were sent out to properties within five hundred feet of each subject site. Notices were sent via certified mail to the property owners of each subject site, and two of the property owners reached out regarding this request, and neither of them requested to opt out. This is the existing zoning map, only outlining the parcels included in this, in tonight's amendment. And this would be the proposed amendment map, amended map, demonstrating the new zoning designations and what they would be. We also have printed copies of each of these maps available here in the chambers tonight behind the dais. So now I'd like to go through each parcel to demonstrate what that amendment would look like, beginning with the temporary parking lot located along Newland Street. This parcel is currently vacant, and it's used as seasonal parking lot during summer months with a zoning designation of industrial limited. This was the site that Mary Jo had mentioned. Here is the existing zoning map and the existing general plan map. So the amendment would change the zoning designation from industrial limited to medium density residential. And one of the other comments Mary Jo mentioned about the mobile home park zone changing, the general plan does not have a designation for mobile home parks. So you'll see the zone is RMP, and the corresponding general plan designation to RMP in the general plan is RM. So that is consistent, and those are not changing. There's no proposed change with the mobile home park. I think the other comment was the parcel closer to PCH that is highlighted as green on the zoning map and pink on the general plan. That is a coastal conservation area, and that is not included in tonight's request. So here is what the amended zoning map would look like, only affecting that temporary parking lot site that we had mentioned. The second example is the Orange County Sanitation District located along Booker Street in PCH. This site includes fifteen of the parcels that are included in tonight's request. The site currently has a few different zoning designations of residential agriculture, industrial limited, industrial general, residential medium high density, as well as commercial. However, the entire site has a general plan designation of public, because it is a public utility site. So this amendment would change the zoning designation to all fifteen parcels to public, semi-public, to correspond with the general plan. The next example we have is a portion of an existing driveway within an existing multifamily development. It only is including this portion on the, on the northern part of the site. The site is already developed as multifamily with, as you can see, it is primarily zoned high density residential, and the driveway is designated as commercial visitor. So the general, this zoning map amendment would change the zone of just that portion to RH to match the rest of the site. Then we have the commercial shopping center located along PCH and Warner. This center also includes the gas station on the corner as well, so it consists of three parcels that are all currently zoned general commercial. And the general plan designation is commercial visitor, which is a designation that is commonly seen in the coastal zone for allowing visitor-serving uses. So the amendment would change the zone from general commercial to commercial visitor to match the general plan. The next example we have is fire station number seven, located along Warner. It's just behind the previous example of the shopping center. The fire station is currently zoned general commercial and consists of two parcels. However, it is a public safety facility, so the general plan has it designated as public. So this amendment would change it to public, semi-public to match. And then this is our last example that we have. It is a portion of an existing parking lot in the harbor along Countess Drive. It is only including the southern portion of the parking lot. As you can see, the northern one is, the northern portion of the parking lot is zoned as open space. The southern portion is zoned as medium density residential. This parking lot serves as parking for the marina, as well as guest parking for that condominium located just to the south. However, the general plan has the entire parking lot designated as open space. So this amendment would change that parcel to open space to match. Staff has received thirteen inquiries regarding tonight's request, again, two of them being property owners. Majority of the residents of the correspondence came from the Huntington by the Sea Mobile Home Park, with no concerns of the proposed adjacent zone change. We also received a letter on Friday, April nineteenth, which was attached as late correspondence. So with that, staff recommends approval based on the findings that the zoning map amendment and the local coastal program amendment are both consistent with the general plan and its goals and policies, that it's necessary to comply with the government, California Government Code, Section six-five-eight-six-zero-C, requiring zoning to be consistent with the general plan, and that the proposed amendments will address the nonconformities and bring such parcels into compliance. Staff also finds the request to be categorically exempt from CEQA. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, questions? Hang on, it's upside down. Hang on a minute. Oh, there we go. There we go. Okay, Commissioner Kennedy.
Thank you, Chairman. A couple of questions and a couple of observations. My first one is the fourth example, the commercial site there at Warner, the shopping center. It, CV versus CG, so commercial general, I understand the use, commercial, or the visitor. Would you consider that a lateral move in regards to the ability from an ownership standpoint? Was he on board?
This was one of the proprietors that reached out, and we did discuss what that change would look like. I also went over what the different uses would be that would be allowed if this were to be changed to commercial visitor.
And he was good with everything?
Correct.
Okay. All right. That's good to hear. The other thing is, it's, I bring it up in almost every meeting, but, so first off, when was the government code, Section six-five-eight-oh, created? The one that it's cited all the time to get into compliance?
I wouldn't know off the top of my head, but I can certainly look into that for you.
It just seems, the one thing I have, tonight's pretty straightforward. There's really no downside to most of these changes, no residential impact where somebody's going to potentially be against it. But again, it's these, the land use change was done in twenty seventeen, and I'm just wondering, simultaneously, why weren't these, they immediately were rendered nonconforming by the change in the land use plan? And the fact that this is seven years, and I know we had COVID, and I've heard that all before, but we didn't have COVID in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and not even twenty nineteen. It just, it astounds me that we're cleaning this stuff up seven years later, when it was out of conformity the second the land use plan was changed. So, I mean, forget about the COVID. Why was that? That's the first question. And the second question, the, the local coastal program, it's the first time I've heard the LCP. When was that designated?
Hello, Chair and Planning Commission. Before I answer that question, I do want to just take a brief pause to introduce our new Deputy Director Jill Arabe, or Jill Boss. She just started with us at the beginning of April, so I wanted to introduce her, because she'll be coming to all of the Planning Commission meetings from here on out. Our first LCP was approved in, I want to say nineteen eighty-five, and the city's had a certified LCP ever since.
Okay. Let me just make, let me just look through my questions. Somebody else can ask some questions. I, you know, I don't want to monopolize the time, but I do have a few more questions, but let somebody else speak.
Commissioner Kennedy? I mean, excuse me. Commissioner Ian?
Thank you, Chair Twining. Thank you, Chair Twining. So, yeah, I want to comment a little bit on this process as well. We've been taking the city staff. So one of the first meetings, you know, the city staff brought up that we were going to, they were going to put together a bunch of parcels where the zoning didn't match the general plan, and they were going to request us to approve the zoning modifications. And, and there was obviously significant concern about the six residential units that we'll get to roughly in June. The city did state this as a housekeeping item, and it brought a level of scrutiny and attention from the Planning Commission Board. And out of abundance of caution, the city agreed to break these parcels up into different groups, and then we could do subset votes versus putting them all together. And I supported that decision to be cautious and provide the chance for the public to have more input, but I do want to reiterate some of the stuff that Madeline said, and I've dug into this a little bit more. The general plan land use designation approved in two thousand and seventeen is the overriding land use authority for the city of Huntington Beach and all cities in California. And if there's a difference or a discrepancy between the general plan and the zoning, it's not a choice as to which one it should be or which one is better. That choice has already been made and, and done. The general land plan is the final decision on land use authority, and if the zoning is not consistent, that means the zoning is out of date and must be updated to match zoning. And I believe it has to be done by June of two thousand and twenty-four, based on recent state law. City Attorney can validate that. So when the city used the term housekeeping several months ago and is using it again today, it's a fair term, because it really is a housekeeping item. We're not setting policy up here. That policy was set in two thousand and seventeen, when the general plan land use was set. That's all this is saying. So, and I also have a few concerns that if we, you know, we talk about whether we should approve zoning or not approve it to match the general plan. We talk about, it's already been done. We have these public hearings, and people come up to the podium and state if we change zoning, it's going to impact property values, or going to have all these other impacts. It's kind of giving them false hope. Those decisions, again, are done and are at least seven years old, if not older. It's also, I don't know if these folks who come to these meetings know that those land use decisions are done, but I hate to give people false hope that, that the zoning won't be changed because they don't want it to. It's already state law. So it's, I'm being repetitive here, but I just, the optics of this concerns me. Now, with city staff, I also was wondering, are these issues legacy issues where people felt like the general plan update was unfair, they weren't listened to, nobody responded to them? And I thought, maybe this is a legacy issue that people are still upset about it. So I went back to the NOP, Notice of Preparation, the draft EIR, the final EIR, and all the letters that were submitted throughout the entire EIR process, and I even went back to my notes from two thousand and fifteen and sixteen on the outreach community meetings I attended. There wasn't a single comment made by agency or resident on any of the parcels that we're talking about tonight, not even the six hundred block residences, and that was identified to be changed seven, eight years ago. So there was no discussion or, or people upset or not happy with those general plan related to all the parcels we're talking about today. So I only share this for this additional background, so that provides some assurance that we are doing the right thing here, matching up the zoning to the general plan. I mean, we are going to still, I still like having the six hundred block as a separate item. I think it's worthy of that because of its high level of scrutiny, but the rest of these things, I mean, I feel like, I just want to acknowledge to the city, I don't, I do believe this is a housekeeping item, and I think, you know, we could have probably rolled them all up into one, but we'll, we're moving on, and we'll finish this process up in the next couple of months.
Commissioner Woods. Thank you, Chairman Twining. My question is about the Newland parcel and related to parking. Does it actually get used by people from AES, or was that just at some point in the past?
It, it was used for AES parking when they were going through their project, and now that use was terminated, and then it was entitled for a seasonal parking lot.
Okay, so that was just a short-term?
Yeah, that was a temporary staging parking lot when they were going through the construction. And then after that was done, they stopped, AES stopped using the site for the construction parking lot, and then the property owner entitled it for a seasonal parking lot. It's been used like that for about a year.
Does that have a CUP?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had. Commissioner Kennedy?
Thank you, Chairman Twining. Thank you so much for that, Ian. What I would say is a couple of things. Because of the, the pressure we put on them, they did break them out, and that did allow the public to, I mean, you were contradictory, contradicting yourself when you said, it's done. It is, so to speak, but then you were okay with the ability for the six to be separately voted on. And just because nobody was aware of it, our public has got a lot more going on than coming to a building, Planning Commission meeting, reading a public notice, things like that. So the fact that there was really no outreach done by the, you know, the residents, that's not surprising. I would imagine most people couldn't name two city council members if you went out in our own city. So people just have their lives. With that said, it, the thing that's alarming for me is the power of the general land use plan. If the city wanted to zone properties that were adjacent to a new change in the land use plan, you could literally go out and make those changes to satisfy whoever wanted new changes, and render all the adjacent properties nonconforming, and based on, you know, Mr. Adams. And by law, we would have to say, that's it, change them. And so there's a lot of power in that general land use plan, and I just want to go on record saying that that's a powerful document, and it can change the course of a city by law just by saying, we want commercial general, or we want this. So I like the fact that we're raising awareness, and we took you guys to task, and you've had to do the extra work, and we appreciate it. And I also like the fact that the city might become more aware that they should be a little bit more attentive to what may go on with their property. For example, thank goodness the commercial general owner of that shopping center was okay with the, the CV change, because I know at one point that center was for sale for about twenty-one million dollars. And if that's, if that owner did not want that change, and he was rendered to be forced to take that after making that huge capital investment, that would be, you know, an issue. And if he was not aware of the, the fact of a general land use plane, nonconforming parcel at the time, to have stuck him with a zoning change because he was unaware, would be cause for potential litigation. Thank goodness that's not the case. But I guess my summary is that general land use plan is a very powerful document. Our residents should be aware of what's going on, and maybe it only happens every seven years, but on that seventh year, if that's the case, they should be very well aware. And I think at that time, there should be notices sent out to any properties that would be adjacent to new changes for the general land use, so they would have the ability to come raise concerns prior to codifying that. Thank you.
I support that a lot, actually, on the general plan, much more. I don't know what the outreach is, but certainly as much notification as you can, because that is the big one that, that makes everything happen. Sorry, I cut myself off.
Any other questions? I might have one here. Which example, when we are going through the examples, covered the, the property at two-one-six-seven-three Newland Street? Can you tell me what example that was? Can you tell me what example that was?
That would be the example on the screen right here.
Oh, wow. Okay. And let's see, the existing right now is residential, the general plan is residential medium. And I can't read the blue, is that?
It's limited and industrial.
Okay. So we are changing it from
To look like that.
Okay, I see. Okay, that's it. That's the only question I had. I get my stuff out here. If there's no further questions, we now have an open public hearing. Do we have any additional speakers?
We have no one signed up to speak.
All right, thank you. Planning Commissioners, we can now deliberate on the item here. So who wants to start? Anybody would like to speak about it? Commissioner Adam?
I'm ready to approve it.
Commissioner Kennedy? Okay. Well, is it time for a vote? I make a motion to approve?
You want to do it?
Oh, go ahead.
Last time I had my reading glasses, it was, I had to read like a four minute dialogue. I, motion to approve, sorry, I got Sorry, 20. Yeah, motion to approve zoning map amendment number 24001 with findings and local coastal program amendment number 24-001 with findings. We have a second?
All second.
We have five ayes. Commissioners Rodriguez and Pelman are absent. Motion carries.
Planning Commissioners' action on this item will be forwarded to the City Council.
Consent calendar, anything there?
We have no consent calendar items. The next is planning items with Planning Manager Ramos.
Okay. Before we close this evening, Planning Commissioners, do you have any comments to provide? We'll start on my right with Commissioner Adam.
I don't have any further comments. Thank you. Welcome.
I'm still learning how to use this, but thank you.
Welcome, Jill.
Oh, sorry. I can't even turn on the microphone. I apologize. I'm happy to be here. I'm looking forward to working with all of you.
Welcome back, I guess, right?
Yes, thank you.
No comments, but welcome, Jill.
No comments and welcome.
I guess that's everything on the agenda tonight, so I adjourn this meeting.